Okay, you want to start with the Prudential?
Yes, so, welcome everyone. First thing we have to do to start this whole thing off is each of the chairs is going to call their respective boards to order. So I'm gonna start and I'm gonna call the Prudential Committee to order.
I will call the Westford Board to order.
So I'm gonna call the Essex Westford School District Board to order.
And I will call the U forty-six Board to order.
And I will call the Essex Town School District Board to order again.
Slides. Anybody else we missed, just to make sure? Okay. Alright, so, just following our agenda real quick. Any visitors or staff that would like to be heard who are attendance? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So, I'm actually just gonna go and turn the meeting over to Sue, who's going to lead us in a, I don't know, basically a discussion session of transitioning all of these boards toward one.
Thank you, Michael. Hi, everyone, I'm Sue McCormick and I know many of you, but not all of you, so I'll just do a really quick introduction. So, basically, my work is to help people have productive conversations that lead to change. And I wear lots of hats, I live a couple of blocks from here, in Essex Junction. I was one of the coordinators with Liz Subin of the Heart and Soul Essex Project. I work with a national organization called Everyday Democracy. We help people around the country have conversations about all kinds of interesting issues. And for the last three years, I've been working with the Nellie May Education Foundation to help school districts in New England build their capacity for effective school community engagement. And I'm very privileged because the new board, even before it quite existed, applied for one of these grants and got one. So I'm actually having a wonderful opportunity to work here in my hometown in Essex. And I've been helping a group called Voices for Education and some of the members of that group are around the table. And their job is to really make sure that as this new school district gets up and running, that the voices of students and teachers and community members and people who are often not heard are incorporated and really inform decisions that are being made in the district. So that's just a little bit about me. I want to tell you how I got here tonight. Just a few days ago, I got an email from, I think it was Liz, saying, "We are having all of the legacy boards together in a couple of days and we want you to help us mine all of the lessons learned and the wisdom from all of these boards and help inform this transition. And it's happening in four days and you have an hour and a half." And when Mark walked in, I said, "I hope I didn't make a mistake saying yes to this town." So, there's, you know, obviously, that's an impossible task. And so what I talked with Liz about is, you know, what is something meaningful that we could do in the next hour and a half together? Really to celebrate a lot of the work that's happened and to share some lessons learned and try to get some wisdom from the group. So I just want to say, this is not gonna be comprehensive. It's not gonna be down to the fine grain of what this new board might want to be doing. But hopefully, it will just provide some broad information and dialogue across the boards. Because my understanding is, this is not an opportunity that happens all the time, that you have all these different boards together. So, let me just talk quickly about the purpose of the meeting and then we'll get right into it. So, the purpose is really to celebrate the work. You guys have all invested a lot of your hours and evenings over a period of years, really in one of the best school districts around, and that's a huge accomplishment. We have to celebrate that. We want to capture some wisdom of the boards that will help inform the work of the new board going forward. And then, of course, we know that there are some challenges in education that are with us always. They don't go away very easily. And so we wanted to have a time to identify some opportunities that you see that this new district, this new unified district, might have to tackle some of those challenges maybe in a new way. So those are what we're hoping to do. Does that make sense to folks? And then, the way we're gonna do it is, we're going to do a little opening activity first for the legacy board, so that you can work a little bit with your colleagues for a few minutes. Then we're going to have some small mixed group discussions, so you have the opportunity to talk to people on different boards and share some of the lessons learned and we'll hear about that. We'll do a full group conversation about challenges and opportunities and then we'll do a closing celebration, which Ben is gonna help me pull off over there. Okay? So, for the opening activity, what I would like to do is invite you all... Well, first of all, let's go around and just do introductions and then I'll tell you what the first activity is. So if you can just say your name and what board you serve on, we'll start there and then we'll split up. Go ahead.
Kim Gleason and on the Essex Town School Board. And E W S D.
Erin Knox, I'm on the U forty-six Board.
Brian Downey, you on the U forty-six Board.
Marla Durham, I'm on the Prudential Committee and on the E W S D Board. And the C C S U Board.
Candace Morgan, I'm on the Prudential Committee.
Liz Subin, U forty-six, E W S D and C C S U.
Almano Pete.
Diane Clonan, Essex Westford.
Pat Murray, I'm on the Prudential Committee and the Essex Westford Board.
Kathy Printon, I'm on the U forty-six Board.
Don Hill Fleury, Essex Town School Board.
Dan House, Essex Town School Board.
Cashel Weldon, Essex Town School Board.
Rachel Preston, Essex Town School Board.
Jason DeRosa, Prudential Committee.
Keely Shell, Essex Westford.
Andre Roy, the C C S U Board, the Westford Board and the E W S D Board.
Marcy Heath. Ditto.
I'm Michael Smith, I'm on the Prudential Committee and on the C C S U Board.
You skipped.
I'm Judy Denova, Superintendent of C C S U.
Beth Cobb, incoming superintendent, July one.
Mark Andrews, I'm never bored, but I do serve the Essex Town Board and the E W S D Board.
And I also want to welcome back to our being around the table, it's really wonderful. So I have some good news and some bad news. The bad news for our opening activities, you all have to get up. And the good news is, you all get to get up and move around. But I'll tell you where you're going first. So, what I want to do is, I'm gonna ask you to organize yourselves by the board that you serve on. And I would like to invite all the visitors to join one of the boards that is, you know, most closely aligned with the school that you're affiliated with. So I would love to not have any observers, but we should all participate in this, okay? This is going to be very fast, you have literally five minutes. And this is what I want you to talk about in your group. I want you to talk about this. If your school board, your legacy school board were a movie, what genre movie would it be and why? And I want you to pick a title for your school board and then we're gonna hear from every group. And so we're gonna go into four groups. We're going to go into the, these are the four legacy boards, right? So the Westford Board, the Essex Town Board, U forty-six and the Prudential Committee. Okay, so, get into groups, you have about five minutes.
Okay.
To share, and towards to share what they came up with. So let's start with Westford. Movie and why, very quickly, and then the title, if you can give the title.
We didn't really settle on a title, but I was reaching for the top, comes to my mind, because we're always striving to get over any obstacle. And sometimes, we've had to go a different direction, so we've always managed to reach that up, overcome the obstacle and get to the top.
He said our genre would be action-adventure.
How about the Essex Town School District?
Oh, we are action-adventure because we're willing to explore different roles in education. Our movie is The Guardians of the Galaxy because we like the title, first of all. We really are the guardians of our children and our children's future, as well as the financial future of our taxpayers.
I'm Rachel Leach, the raccoon.
Rachel wants to be the raccoon.
Do you do action-adventure boards? How about the Prudential Committee?
Well, we decided to go, we felt much more along the lines of, more of a dramedy. And we actually, instead of so much a movie pile, we went more with a television show. And we went with Parks and Rec.
I want to say just one quick sentence about why Parks and Rec.
Well, to be honest, I mean, of the board members here, I mean, that was, that's been our focus for pretty much my entire time on the board, has been various issues with Parks and Rec. And also, it was very much part of our identity as a board. Not only, you know, our schools, but the recreation department within our community.
How about the U forty-six Board?
Well, we kind of were thinking like an indie, independent dome, you know, indie. Then we kind of thought, maybe a little bit like science fiction, we think it is like innovative, the future. But I don't know, I think we kind of settled, maybe out of indie. Yeah, we actually talked a little bit about documentary, though, so a little more from all that. I don't know, somebody said the title of All the Places We Go. Because we kind of feel like we're, you know, sort of passing the torch and, you know, keep moving forward.
Okay, so we had action, comedy, independent documentary, very nice, diverse. So for the next part, what we want to do is actually mix you up across boards. And we're going to, you're going to have about fifteen minutes of conversation in small groups and then we're going to sit down at the table and hear from every group, okay? And what we'd like to do, and when I came in, I heard, I think this was the U forty-six Board, doing some of this conversation, this may be, this was the C C S U Board, excuse me. Having some conversation, it's going to be similar, but you're going to have the benefit of talking across boards. So, this, I'll let you, I'll give you some instructions and then we'll divide up. So, the first thing I'd like you to do is, in your small group, and you're gonna have to be brief, I don't have a lot of time, I want you to take turns sharing a very personal story. So please don't talk about, you know, "It was wonderful when our test scores were this." I want you to talk personally about a time when you felt really proud to be part of your school district. This can be around a policy that you created that you thought was really important. It could be around something that happened with a particular student or a particular initiative that your school was involved in. But just make it personally, something that you are personally involved with, okay? Once you've all shared your stories, then I want you to talk about, what are the themes that you notice across your stories? So what stands out? And then I want you to prepare to briefly share your key themes with the rest of the group. What we're trying to get at here is, what really matters most? What are some of the real accomplishments and strengths that you all were involved with and that you felt were particularly relevant? Does this make sense, the assignment? So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have you, we're gonna have five groups. And so I'm gonna start by asking the U forty-six Board to count off by five.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Okay, so can you guys come stand up in front, please?
Join us for this portion? Diane's for, yeah, join the five.
Okay, so you're five.
You're five.
So, one, two, three, four, five, right here. And now, the Westford Board, there's three. Okay, so can you split yourselves up in the first one, two, three?
Two.
One, two and three?
Three, yep.
Okay.
Two's over here.
And the Prudential Committee, again, just count off.
One, two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
So, three.
Ones are here.
Two.
You're four.
We're three.
Donna, you have four.
I have four.
Okay. So wherever you feel you have the most.
Who has two fewer people? We have three.
We have four.
Oh, we have four.
So, we're going to come back together at seven-ten, we're gonna come around the table. So please get a timekeeper for your youth. And I would give yourselves about ten minutes to share stories and then a couple of minutes at the end to think about themes and keep prepared to report back. Great, okay? First of all, I just want to ask people to kind of give you like a thumbs up, a thumbs down or a thumb sideways, depending on how that went. Was it useful to talk across the boards? Well, let's hear from each of the, of the groups. And we had five groups, right? So let's start, we'll just do it in a minute. Let's start with group number one. And we're hearing, we want to hear the themes that you noticed during your conversation. And Ben is going to kindly take some notes for us.
Alright, so, group number one, you know, we tried to take some notes here and one of the things, a common theme for us was collaboration and engagement across the spectrum of the stakeholder groups. You know, making connections with the community. And continuous improvement, whether that was governing or interactions with the various groups. Leadership and respect. And around all that was communication.
Is someone from your group who could share, just in one minute, a story, a personal story that kind of captures some of those themes that they started with?
So, we talked a little, we talked about in terms of the different roles, having the involvement of how, when you bring like students into the board and the communication with the students and the teachers and seeing how what you've done as a board to help guide the policies and help direct how the funds are utilized, can then be seen by what our students are bringing back to us and how they're taking leadership of their own learning with their teachers. So that was one of the examples of how that includes a lot of those pieces.
So, group two, let's start with the story, just a very quick personal experience somebody had on the board that is kind of a reflection of your themes and then if you could share your themes with us, that would be great.
So, what I, I gave the story from my board perspective and service. One of the things that, so at the high school level, we sometimes deal with disciplinary issues that have an ultimate consequence, in which there's an expulsion of a student. And it's a pretty serious matter, it's a matter that can change a life. And it's taken with a great deal of respect and dignity as we go through the process to make sure that our deliberation and everything works. But one of the things that we began to introduce, a couple of years now, was that we began to introduce degrees and really sort of towards a restorative justice kind of mindset, in which not every case, but cases that deserved that consideration, were given an opportunity to work through a memorandum of understanding in which parents were involved and teachers and administrators, superintendent of the board, to create a situation that was really structured, but gave that student a chance to continue their public education. And we've had a number of really good success stories. Kids that have been able to find that, that, you know, in many ways, as I say, there's no such thing as a bad kid, there's just bad decisions. And there's a need to make sure that the system picks that up. And the theme that I talked about was, it shows the humanity, you know? And throughout our group, the themes that came up were things like individualized, personalized, caring and humanity. And I think that, you know, that shows the type of approach that the boards and the various communities, both as board members as well as parents. It's what we, it's what we want and it's what we try to create.
That's us, do you, story, you want to start with story? Anybody want to share their story?
You're talking.
I'm talking. That's not unusual. Well, I'll just talk about my story then, as it was about our tech center. And for me personally, before I became a board member, I really wasn't aware of what incredible opportunities exist there and what programs are in place. And my story, Erin and I have had the opportunity to go to the recognition ceremonies and everyone should have a chance to see what that's like for the families whose lives have really been visibly transformed by that program. So, Bob, wherever Bob is, but that, the words that came from our group, everyone, that led to, everybody shared the pride in their programs and in our buildings, came through loud and clear. What we have to offer our learners, the opportunities for kids that exist and the leadership that makes that possible, were themes that came across equity and attention to equity, consistency in our offerings. So teachers feel like they're being able to give consistent lessons and kids are feeling more like they have, they're getting across the board, consistent education delivered. And the positive environment that's created for touch issues, that are both social and academic issues in our schools. And a constant attention to outcomes for kids and the journey from pre-K to twelve and beyond.
Fourth group? Fourth group, you ready?
One of the stories I, one of the stories I liked hearing was Dawn's. And it was about how the community came together after a major crisis, which was the shooting in the town of Essex. Also, I thought Kathy had a great story. Before she got on the board, she was talking about joining the board and people at work or people outside our boards, outside our community, told her, "You don't want to do that because all you do is bicker and people don't get along." So Kathy. So, and then between all our different stories, one of the biggest themes was being fair and balanced. Whether it's for the education of the students, but fair and compassionate. Balanced, fair and compassionate, whether it's with staff or with students. And that you need a plan and then you develop it and create the alignment and with communications as the most important theme. Did I get it, girls?
That was great. I do want to say, they weren't talking about our boards, they were talking about boards they have been on in their own communities. And they were like, "Stay away from the boards."
That what they were saying?
My comment was that by having policy governance, we got rid of all that problem on ours.
And now we're actually, we were debating between being an action-adventure or a romantic comedy, to be honest. That was the first thing, they suggested romantic comedy, so just say, we love each other a little.
One thing, Sue, I did tell the girls about my story, it was back when I got on the board. I made a big mistake and I got involved with the reorganization of the K through eight schools. And Mr. Harrison, lovely Mr. Harrison, called it the Durham Plan. So then, everybody could, that didn't like it, could take it out on me or whatever. But the reorg that we did finally balanced the number of students in the classrooms between Summit and Fleming, so that was also a balancing act, making sure you have equal classrooms and equal opportunities. So that kind of went with the fair and balanced. But don't put your name to anything, don't step out there.
Great, and the fifth group?
So, I mean, I think our themes were pretty common, what everyone else talked about. You know, willingness to listen and communicate is just so beyond crucial. Not just amongst the individual board members, but as we saw with, you know, the Prudential Committee with Parks and Rec, you know, getting out into the community as well. Like, it takes such proactive involvement that even just sometimes, like, you know, I mean, the REC Study Committee did an amazing job putting together so many meetings that I thought were incredibly informative, like I went to multiple ones. But there was still so much misinformation out there that I think that, like, you kind of have to keep hammering at it and hammering at it and, you know, even to the point where you kind of want to give up at some points. But I think that eventually, you break through, hopefully, you break through. So, you know, there was that, a lot of being open-mindedness, you know, the finding good ways for functional and non-functional unification, because I think we had some good examples of both. Diane, I'm gonna paraphrase your story a little bit, but I think that yours is probably the most personal one, where you talked about bringing Essex Town stakeholders on into the high school, the high school governance, and then finding out that the children in Essex High consider themselves Essex High students. They weren't Essex Junction students, they weren't Essex Town students, they were Essex High students. And that was something that they came across and that they provided more leadership with that and, you know, sort of brought the two communities together into, you know, one sort of a unifying group.
That's great. Thank you. So any reflections after hearing from everybody?
One story, you know, one thing that we also spent a lot of time talking about was the leadership piece and more focalized about the importance of good leadership in terms of the school board, in terms of the superintendent, in terms of the principal to help guide. And that good leadership is a foundation for everything that we're doing also. And I just want to make sure that wasn't lost in our, from our conversation.
Other reflection? So I'll just offer a quick reflection and then we'll move on. So I heard three really strong themes and then I didn't hear much about something that kind of surprises me. So, only one of the group mentioned the programs, that they are proud of the programs. That's interesting to me because I happen to know that a lot of the schools are really working hard to do some really interesting and innovative stuff. And so, I thought that was interesting. The three themes that came out really clearly, though, seem like the good container that can make those programs possible. So what you all talked a lot about across the groups, one, that came, one theme that came through very strongly was the importance of equity and fairness and balance. The second theme that came across very strongly was maybe a cultural theme, words like respect, compassion, humanity. So ideas about the way that you carry out the work. And then the third thing was just the importance of communications and engagement that came out across several of the groups. Does that sound like a fair recap of some of those themes? So maybe that's an interesting thing for the new board to be thinking about. How do you, what are the things that you need to do to make sure that there is equity and fairness? That you are going about the work in a way that is full of respect and compassion and that you are communicating and engaging, so that the programs that you're trying to do can have success?
I would add, you know, compared to more, I think in a cultural, the individuality, that I deal well.
Yes, personalization came up. Martha, would you respond for something?
It sort of seems like the word collaboration is missing. And I think, I don't know exactly where I put it, but I think that's been incredibly important in the success of all of our districts.
So the individuality was around personalization of learning, right? And then the collaboration is around how people are working together. Okay, great. Go ahead.
Sue, talking about none of us mentioning programs except Liz with CTE, I didn't consider programs because I feel they're all important. So it wasn't anything that stood out.
Right, right.
Uh, as one thing.
Okay. So let's keep moving along. The next thing I wanna do is, um, and and of course, there's more that can be added to this and maybe as boards, individual boards, if you have more to add, you can, following this little hour and a half, but this maybe is a good start. So now I wanna invite you to just take a minute of quiet reflection. And I want you to think about, you know, what are some of the real kind of enduring challenges? Or as my colleague Carolyn Lukensmeyer, she calls them wicked problems, that, you know, continue to exist, that things that you kind of dealt with during your time on the board that you feel are still present. Maybe you weren't really able to move the needle on those. So just take a minute, you can jot down some thoughts about that. And then we'll talk about that. Just take another thirty seconds to gather your thoughts. So what I'd like to do is just a really quick brainstorm and just Ben's gonna, like, just get this list up here of, um, you know, just a couple of key, big-picture challenges that, you know, continue to, uh, be present in in your work. And, um, and if, and we don't have to repeat them if somebody's already said them, so, and and I'm not gonna go in any kind of order. So just go ahead and and say say some of those. Go ahead, Marla. You don't have to raise your hand.
The continuing issue of preschool. We have a strong preschool, uh, presence that we've done, but now we need to figure out how to collect the data to prove that the preschool is valuable.
Okay.
And making it even, uh, greater usage for all, all kids.
Okay.
I think, I don't wanna hog it.
So let's just, we're just gonna do the challenges and get them out there, then we'll talk.
Addressing the achievement gap.
Balancing the needs of students and taxpayers. In my experience.
I would say for the, for the high school CTE, it's the challenge of, um, you know, bringing the, visioning the future for the campus and kind of how to get there.
Declining enrollments and sustaining the programs.
Did you say declining?
Yes, for Westford.
Worried above the, uh, trans- transforming of technical education that could leave kids behind as grows in sophistication and demands.
I think, um, engaging with our community in systemic ways, um, was hard before and I'm appreciative of our grant opportunity to have that support, but to feel, think about how that embeds in our culture. So it's systemic and sustainable beyond the grant.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Should we say, instead of declining enrollments, should we say changing enrollments?
Changing enrollments?
Because that, they may fluctuate, like, the challenges of not only them declining, but maybe in some schools, might also spiking.
Fluctuating, okay.
Fluctuating.
And then the last one was, uh, the last one, Ben, was about how do you embed and sustain engagement?
Sorry, Ben. Should've had Liz say it.
That's my my thing, meeting the needs of very diverse students, very diverse learning styles and getting one learning, you know, alternative styles.
So we just have about ten minutes for this discussion, which could take hours, right? Um, and maybe there's an opportunity, maybe some of the board chairs can, um, because you're, you all are continuing to meet, right? We, well, so, some of you are, okay. So this is, this is a really important question and I I almost hate to say it for with ten minutes, but, uh, let's just hear some initial thoughts. So what I want you to think about is, in this new district, there's a joining together. What are the opportunities that are here right now that maybe weren't present before to address some of those challenges that you just identified?
I think that be, being able to have the information, you know, for kids that might have specific needs or whatever, having that be able to transfer less, more seamlessly throughout the educational process. I think that's a huge benefit.
Thinking of the ELL population, I think by R being combined, that there'll be, uh, more ideas of how to address it. Hopefully.
I think, just think there's, with the combining, there's now a greater acceptance and opportunity to make changes that before, maybe a lot of people were more resistant to, because, um, even within each district was kinda set in the way it did things.
I think.
No, go ahead.
I haven't quite figured how how to articulate this, but I think the fact that the superintendent won't be serving many boards will give more opportunity for educational leadership at student center.
I see, is that, there's perhaps a critical mass now for some more unusual activities. And I always use the example of our orchestras in middle school. We have two very small orchestras. If we had one big orchestra, wow, you know what? It would be, it would go from being two, like, oh, it just barely have enough to something, and that's just one example. But the critical mass can make some of the things that will free feet or serve those unusual individual needs, we have the critical mass to do some more of those.
Are there any, um, concerns you have that some of those challenges be, could become more of a challenge with the coming together of the new district?
Transportation. Sorry, I go over.
Was any other, any other kind of, these are more kind of like cautions, you know? You said these things were reported to us, right? Communication, equity and fairness, being respectful and having compassion, personalized learning. We identified some of those kind of wicked problems. You've talked about some opportunities. Any kind of burnt, what, uh, some people call, is there a stone in your shoe that you have to deal with in this new district? Yes, and then Liz, go ahead.
I think we're really described that way, but I know we came out of this town, we have three schools. And you know, Westford, you only have one. The leadership of this school has a relatively small world, whereas that, you're gonna have, is it ten buildings now?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, if you if you visit every, a new building every day, it takes you two weeks to cover the whole district. I could see that being a challenge, that Mark, you could cover every school in three days if you wanted to, and heck, they're only across the parking lot.
So for for leaders to be really engaged with that larger.
With the the whole larger, it's a larger group, it's gonna be harder.
Yeah, and mine sort of piggybacks on that because we heard a lot of, uh, community members feeling like they had a connection to their legacy board and were afraid of losing that connection when there was only one board. Um, so a challenge is finding the right vehicle to allow that communication to take place so that community members still feel connected to the board.
I think there's also, I mean, a challenge that out of the ten schools, you know, you had Parker, this school's reporting to this manager, uh, leadership, this school had the leadership, this one, so now they're gonna be reporting to more centralized and it'll be a question of how, the transition of that, because, you know, have individuals, they were jack-of-all-trades. Now they're gonna have to transition to reporting to, uh, facility manager that they, they were the facility manager before. So you have, that's, we talked about the school, but we also, there's a transition for the personnel as well.
See, there's some relationship now between the, uh, what am I looking for, uh, local governments, um, dealing with their local boards. I think that as we sort of go on, we're gonna have one large board dealing with local governments they maybe, might not be familiar with. Like, if, you know, local government of, you know, the select board in Essex, you know, coming to a larger board or Westford coming to a larger board that only has two Westford members on it, but there's ten people sitting. I can see that being a potential challenge.
I don't, it's not just community members having a connection to the board, it's the teachers and the staff. I just said, yeah, I don't want them to be left behind.
Go ahead, Kim.
I was, um, thinking about, um, the big body of work for Beth, to bring, uh, you know, pretty unique cultures together, recognizing that I think what all of our educators in our communities are hoping for and have always been doing is to do the best we can for kids and their educational journey. So figuring out which stuff is the you must get on the bus stuff and which stuff is, um, this is where we're going and you can get there the way you're gonna get there. And I think that that will take time and be a challenge that, um, can still honor culture, but, um, be respected for understanding the why things are being done and why this thing needs to be done at this time. And, you know, I appreciated the journey that we had through that and I I look forward to us supporting you in that journey.
That's a great segue. Does anybody have anything else that they wanna add to this before we go on?
I'm wondering if there could be a potential problem of, because we're coming from distinct, different, um, schools, uh, boards, if we might try to micromanage because we try to keep what we want in our own communities. So I could say a challenge of, um, really making sure that we're not micromanaging.
Diane, you have something to add?
Um, I don't know if it's as wise and profiteous, Kim, but, um, I guess I'm just, I, I don't mean to think that the high school is so unique and different, but there's so much of a K eight infrastructure. And we know that people run for school board a lot of times because of their connection to the school. So that could be a feeder system into it that's also gonna be governing a regional technical center and a high school. And there, so I'm a little, I'm I'm just trying to think that out. And I'm trying to think of how there's a balance between events and occurrences that happen uniquely at the the pre-K to third grade and events that happen at middle school. And then there are unique things that occur at the high school. And and balancing that? I mean, we, we've, at the union level, we've balanced this whole community thing. Like, we've got that down, that works fine, don't worry about that. I mean, we've, we've been a union high school for twenty-two years and it and it's because of the hard work that people put into it and the faith and the trust that they had that there is only one school. They were all our kids. That we didn't, no one had to self-identify that they were from Westford or Grand Isle or from Essex or Essex Junction. But the, um, there has been that concentration and at times, we've been needing to focus wholly on the technical center or wholly on the high school. And I couldn't imagine adding all the layers to it, you know, and and all the way across. So that's the part that makes me a little nervous. Schools and grade levels don't necessarily have an assigned time to call the attention of the board. That's sort of decided by themselves and, um, that's a part that makes me a little nervous. It'd be a challenge with one.
I would just share one, piggybacking on what Marla said, three different governance structures. You have an incorporated school district, a union school district, and town school districts. And within each of them, there's laws that govern how one operates. And so many of those things have become so ingrained, like, the PC board tends to tax abatement hearing. So who's gonna do tax abatement hearings? You know, how are all the little ways that they operate going to the panel? Um, I think that it will work, it's just knowing what those are and then making those transitions within a community that doesn't really maybe think about those things often. Um, so that trying to get out in front of missteps that could happen just because you've always done what you've always done. Um, so getting out in front of some of those things.
So we're going to transition to our final activity. But before we do, I just wanted to invite Mark and Beth, I don't wanna put either of you on the spot, but you've been sitting here listening, and I just wonder, we've been talking about some things that are important, some opportunities, some challenges, if you just wanna very briefly share any thoughts or reflections?
I prefer you.
My thing. I was looking right at you, Mark.
I do think it's great that I'm here, and thank you, because this is great. My brain is now really moving quickly about all of this. And and it's great to bring up the challenges too, and I'm glad you started with the strengths, because I think some of those strengths are really great leverage points to help with these challenges. Um, so I'm seeing connections between the two and how those strengths can help these challenges. But it's good to hear it all and figure that all out, but, so thank you. I'll be thinking for an hour and a half on the way home.
I mean, the only thing I I would offer, and I think it's up here, Sue, is is to give ourselves permission to take our time. And I think over the last eighteen months, we've been doing a lot of work on how to get the merger done without really spending enough time on on the what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so I think we, in order to really sort of revision or reinvigorate what we, why we, why we made the merger happen in the first place was about students. And so I think I appreciate your facilitation, hopefully throughout next year, to help the board think about what's the investment we're making in what, in in what are we doing and why are we doing it? And not worry about getting it all done. Um, because if we just continue to focus on getting it all done, we're gonna be crushed. Beth will be crushed. And so I think we have to be really thoughtful about what's the action plan going forward. And again, give ourselves permission to go, you know, go slow to go fast. And I think that that's really an important credo to just sort of hold on to.
Well, in that spirit, Mark, um, I'm going to ask us to move into our final activity. But before I do, I just wanna acknowledge there are a couple of people around the table that haven't really spoken yet. And so I just wanna pause for a moment to see if if those folks have anything that they would like to add to this discussion.
Okay, I'll be introvert. Very strong eye. Um, I haven't been on the board for very long in the potential committee, um, and I just, I'm very impressed by the level of talent and dedication across all boards here. Um, and I think that all of ourselves are really great ambassadors to the, uh, good work that you can do on these sorts of things. Um, so I, I think it's been a great opportunity and, um, it's been a pleasure to be a part of it all.
I I found it encouraging, after being the the chair before he sits way back then, to hear Brian say exactly what he said. Thank goodness it worked.
You've done a great job.
Okay, so for our last.
What, I think, were you gonna do, I know.
Go ahead.
Not to put you on the spot.
No, Keely, go, go ahead.
I, seriously, I was just gonna basically make a joke, which is, everyone, to not take what Kim said as a metaphor literally, because no one is required to ride the bus.
Right, that's right. No transportation jokes. You gotta remember, not a joking matter.
Too soon, thank you, Keely.
So our last activity kind of built on what Mark was saying, which is that, um, what I'm noticing about just what's happening in the country as well as closer to home is, um, there's a lot of kind of. just what's happening in the country as well as closer to home is, um, there's a lot of kind of frenzied activity, right? And people are moving really fast. And sometimes I think we don't really take the time to celebrate, you know, the work that we've done. And you all have put in a lot of time and work. I mean, it's really, takes a lot of dedication to serve on a school board. So we're just going to end with a little kind of activity to give us a chance to, um, kind of honor that and to give you all a chance to kind of share your best wishes with, with the new board, okay? And so we have a little way to do that. And I hope this doesn't annoy you all too much, but it's going to require everybody's standing up again and coming over uh, and standing in a circle and, um, so, and we won't have to come back and sit down for this meeting again. We will, we will finish out over there. This is an activity of, as we, you guys mentioned, the importance of communication and engagement. As you know, the Voices for Education, we, we had a planning team with eight students and some parents and some school leaders and, and we met several times, uh, to talk about goals for engaging with the community and, um, and, and make a plan. And we did this kind of activity at the end and people seemed to like it, so Don, can we remember?
It was fun.
I said, it sounded familiar when you asked.
If the national has a weapon, you're in trouble.
So last act.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to go around and I'm going to invite each person to share a best wish for the new school district. And when you do, I'll light your candle, I hope that the technology works and you can put it in the cake, okay? So Don, can we start?
My wish, my wish is that Mark and Judy enjoy their retirement and Beth begins a successful, fulfilling, loving journey.
Thank you, okay, Keely, we'll have people keep coming in.
My wish is that for this to be a home for every student, each different one, no matter how, who they are.
For students that inspire us?
If you can just start using the other candles.
My wish is to continue climbing the mountains. There's never a mountain that's going to be high enough for us not to get over.
My wish is for our teachers and especially our administrators who are often, often the unsung heroes to find success and happiness.
My wish is that all members of this educational community, um, feel like this is where they belong and can thrive.
My wish is for a simple and wildly uneventful transition.
I hope that the new district is innovative, sustainable, creative and fun.
Okay, do I dare try to light it?
My wish is for board members to enjoy every minute of what they do and bring to the states.
I usually get to play with fire, so this is fun.
My wish is that everyone's journey and the burden of it is lightened by the futures you're making.
My wish is for all of our shared learning and wisdom to lifelong, as kids, board people, staff, community members.
My wish is all of these wishes. To keep the focus on students as we go through some challenges and inspiring moments. But to always have that focus on kids, because that's why we're here.
My wish is that there is never a shortage of community members willing to serve on.
You're on that reserve list, don't you?
And to the EWSB board, if someone blows out your candle, we're going to.
My wish is that you're able to keep the promises made to the Red Study for the students and that you are, stay well and be happy.
My wish is that we are indeed able to improve student opportunity and that all students are able to reach their goals.
My wish is that the new board continues to have such a good sense of humor and, uh, good camaraderie with everyone.
Um, my wish is that this becomes space and remains a place that our students will always love.
Okay, well, let's see you beat that.
My wish is, uh, that, uh, remember that we love you and don't forget to write. That was good.
Um, my wish is that the next three seconds of the conference report came from a six-part.
My wish is that future and current board members will always feel honored to be part of this board and that students will always feel as one.
My wish is that all the students, faculty, staff and board members feel that this is really a place for them and they find their individual place in this educational community.
What I want to do quickly is ask everyone who is serving on the board that is not serving on the new board to take one step forward. And let's just say. You can take a step back, I want to just invite Judy and Mark to take a step forward. I want to invite Beth and the new EWSB board to take a step forward. At the moment, I'm excited, we're going to blow out the candle, candles to symbolize the, um, kind of the culmination of the work of the previous boards and the birthday of this new district. So everybody come in close. Ben's going to take a picture. And now Liz, you can let people know when it's time to blow out the candle.
Okay, I guess it's time. Two, three, go.
I am going to ring in and call the U forty-six board to, oh wait, who's taking notes for us? Yeah, I'm going to take them, who's the clerk? Yeah, no, he's not there. Want me to? Can you copy it? That would be fantastic. Oh, who, what do you think? I don't know. Challenge on me, I'm not the one. So I'm going to call us back to order at eleven, eight, eleven P M. And if there are any visitors or staff to be heard, I don't see any. So moving right along to the consent agenda, um, which.
Were there any changes to that?
The, there are. So, um, we're going to add the approval of the minutes from May fifth, um, which we have, since they were sent to us, right?
If no, it's hard copies.
And there are hard, hard copies as well. We're going to add the approval of a donation for CTE. And we're going to remove the bleacher bid recommendation because we did that at a special meeting on, on May fifth. Uh, so thanks for that, but that doesn't need to be on there. So the consent agenda consists of the approval of the warrants. Um, but if I'm going to give, I need a different, I only have the language. Um, but isn't there more detail to that on this date?
Yeah, the org notes.
The org notes, let me pull up my org notes instead of the agenda, hold on, I'm sorry.
Keep turning.
Yeah, the consent agenda. Here we go. So the consent agenda, uh, consists now of approval of warrants, um, the approval of warrants through July to, oh no.
Authorize the clerk.
Yeah, to authorize the clerk or chair to sign the warrants on behalf of the board through the end of the fiscal year transactions. To approve the meeting minutes from April thirteenth and May the fifth. To approve the principals' reports, Bob and Rob's reports were included in the org notes. Uh, affirm the annual meeting minutes. To approve the donation, um, based on a teacher request, Heritage Toyota has donated $1,500 to the Essex High School Scholars Bowl team. And to approve the transfer resolution, the resolution ratifying and confirming the transfer of all assets, obligations and liabilities to the new Essex-Westford School District. And we have that resolution.
Yes, of the CTE donation?
And we, and, and a CTE donation. Was added.
Yeah.
And the details of the CTE donation are.
Bob, do you have those details?
Um, I believe it's, um, I think it's $1,500.
Is it $1,500?
And it's, um, intended to scholarship students in the dental program to take.
That's what it is.
From Northeast Delta Dental.
Yep, yep. To take, to take professional licensure tests.
It's in a. $1,500, okay? So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is, um, this is $5,000, okay?
Yes.
We want to get that number so that that becomes spending authority.
Yes. So it's $5,000 for the dental, um, from, from Northeast Dental, Delta, Northeast Delta Dental. And there's copies, so they. Would anyone like a copy? Somebody wants a copy? Be good Cathy, do you want a copy? And so that amount is $5,000.
I will make that motion for the consent agenda.
So Brian?
Need a second?
Need a second? Aaron? Um, all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The U, motion passes unanimously. Nice. Um, and, so the next item on the agenda is to talk about the new U forty-six school board member. And I think we need to accept the resignation of Brian Donahue, which, would, would you like to state that you resigned? What's the process for that?
Um, I am at this meeting officially offering my resignation to the U forty-six school board to be effective, um, following this meeting. And would like to say that it's, um, it's been an, an honor to work and to, to try to move forward to the degree that one individual can, uh, the great work that so many individuals contribute to on a daily basis to serve our students and to, uh, make the future happen, so, uh, thanks for giving me the chance. And thank you to Jeff Culkin for convincing me that it would just be a couple of months, nine years ago.
Thank you, Brian. So we need to take action to, do we accept that resignation now or open up a discussion about the new board member? I think you can open up discussion, I think, um, it's, um.
So we can, we can deny.
I was going to say, I don't really think there's any action you can take. We have a really good board member in the wings here. So, um, one thing that we talked about and in keeping with the spirit of the meeting that we just attended, we were thinking that it would really make sense to have somebody fill this seat from now until the, the, let, this board dissolves at the end of December, who has a great institutional, um, memory and experience with this district and this, and this community. And, um, Diane Clement serves on the new board and was the first chair of the U forty-six board. And I reached out to her last week to see if she would be willing to serve in this role. And I, I, um, and she does a million things in this community and I'm grateful that she has agreed to, to serve in that role. And so I guess I would start by putting that recommendation out to the board and see if there's any discussion, um, to be had around, around that. Yes, of course.
Um, I, um, wanted to thank you, Brian, for your leadership of this group. I have learned a tremendous amount of compassion for the community, uh, leadership, um, way to words, word things in such a fashion that is respectful and thoughtful. So I take away from your leadership of this organization, this board, um, personally and professionally, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I'm happy to support you on this board. Welcome, if that's where we go.
Thanks Cathy, that's really nice.
And I would agree, I think that's wonderful, thank you so much for being able to, so step up with everything else we've got, all the other meetings you get to go to.
And, um, and I just wanted to say, Brian, I respect you very much and thank you for showing all of us so much respect. I really appreciate that.
So it's a decision actually of the Prudential Committee to appoint a village representative on the U forty-six board. So we can take your recommendation.
And that board will be meeting tomorrow and it's on their agenda to discuss tomorrow. So we will.
Formalize it.
Take that recommendation to that board and hopefully, uh, formalize it after they meet tomorrow afternoon.
Great, thank you, Diane.
I think Diane, you are an amazing choice and I so appreciate you stepping up and willing to take it, whatever the role is. But, um, your service to this community to start this board off was fantastic. And I think in some ways it's almost fitting that you, you see it on its way out as well. Yeah, so thank you.
And Brian, I would like to say, um, as much as I'm sad to see you leave as a board member, I am so eternally grateful that you stepped up to be the new CFO, COO of the organization. So timely, we've already seen what your work has been like in the past. And, um, one of the things tonight, when they were talking about challenges going forward, is really creating those 21st century learning environments, um, and your, I just look at this library every time I, I think of you, both upstairs and downstairs, uh, and the benefits that you've provided, uh, to the rank in a way that CTE programs now have the proper square footage and, and the environment that they need for so many kids to be successful. So, um, I hope that, um, you'll still be in service to the board in just a different capacity.
And then I'm still speaking to you?
And that you're still speaking.
Where you live.
No, but it's been really, um, it's really been hard, it's Bob and Rob. No, but it's been really, it's really been hard, as Bob and Rob can say, to be without that leadership in the last four months. The principals have all stepped up to support, and certainly all of central office administrators. And something I forgot to say earlier in the moment, your very own Erin McGuire was honored Thursday night by accepting the Gail Link Award, which is the Outstanding Special Ed Administrator of the Year.
That's great.
And her new partner Dylan was there to join in that. So you're going to have a great team, and they're all looking forward to your sense of humor and creative thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, yes, thank you. I think that's it on that item. And the next is the capital plan update. Judy, do you want to give that? Or do you want, it was in our org notes, I don't know, how do you want to handle that? Do you want to have a discussion about it?
I would say, any questions? I would say, just provided an update as far as the construction on the south side of 51 Park Street, which is my office. It's a really bad time of year to have siding replaced.
I know.
Bang, bang, bang. But definitely needed.
Is there a good time here?
Yeah. The only thing is, I wanted Judy to squelch any rumors you might be hearing that we're selling the place. And then, we have a visually impaired student coming to the high school next year, and so we've spent some of the capital fund to make sure the plant or the facility is ADA compliant. So I was very pleased to see the student focus on the use of that money. And then you've got the bleachers in place, they've arrived and they're putting them together. They're also going to put some plants and shrubs around 51 Park Street, because it's looking a little bare. And that's pretty much what we're doing with some of the capital money. So we've really put it to good use. I know the bleachers are something that we've had for over 50 years, so...
Original equipment.
Original.
Yeah, amazing.
Fortified many, many times.
Yeah, yeah, so that's...
Reduction in labor to put those together.
Really? That's so helpful. I don't know if there's anything else the principals wanted to share? Like capital improvements or your reports? Any questions?
The only thing, as you noted, that that brings our capital plan balance up to $23,859 plus or minus as of June 30th. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, we also had in our notes that the CTE recognition night is June 15th, Thursday night. Erin and I have really enjoyed being there again. And I know Bob and his staff invited anybody else who wants to be part of that to contact you. So that's an invitation to, you've been there to that, yeah.
I love it, and I can't be there this year. I have memorial service to go to.
I'm sorry. The recognition will be much more fun. So if anybody can go, just reach out.
I'll have to see what the calendar's going on, but, yeah, it was fun in the past.
Yeah, it's a fun night. It's a really meaningful night. And then the EHS graduation is at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning on June 17th. Again, invitations extended, and just let Rob know if you intend to come.
Email me, that would be fun.
Which is also a lovely event. The skating rink will wear my son will hopefully have a caping down on his head. Cap on his body, cap on his head, down on his body. And I think that's it. I think the message, for me, the message to the community is a huge thank you from this board, that I would love to put out into the world, and maybe a little summary of what we came up with tonight about the things that we care most about when Sue writes up the meeting notes. We can share that theme out as a message on the board site, so the community can hear a little bit about what that conversation was about. Is there anything else that we want to put out into the world? All right, so why don't we do, why don't we wait for Sue's report, and I'll write up a little blurb, and we can share it out that way after that? Then I think with that said, I think we can adjourn. So, motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Brian? Second. Erin, seconds, 8:26 PM.
Nice.
Yeah, that's, wow, what are we going to do for the next hour and a half? No, I'm going to sign these things.
Now you're going to sign for the next half hour.
I'm going to sign. Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you to Erin. Oh, Kathy.
Because I guess you've taken a shy, terrified community member, and we feel very comfortable as a board member.
Oh, you're so sweet, Kathy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. And speaking of sweet, Erin, thank you for the gift bags room that you got together. I know that it was a gift, but I think that was truly...
Something people can use.
You're welcome.
The women in the office enjoyed having you in there, too. When I took over, they all missed you.
Well, I think it's a collector's item.
Yes, it is. It was so appropriate in the last year. I totally agree.
From the U-46 board on our way out.